I now call the January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Canaan lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verite and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor, oh, John Lars Baker.
I'm here. I declare that we have a quorum present. The next item is to approve the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Your honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The first item of business is proposed changes to the current childcare facilities permitting process. We have a report from the Community Development Director.
Yes, your honor. As staff, we kind of have been looking at our, we recently took over doing the childcare permits, and we would like to put the, make the childcare permits a little more consistent with what we do with the home occupation permits. And I'll give you a little bit of background first. The paperwork and files for the home occupation permits and the childcare permits are both processed through the Community Development Clerk. And then you can kind of see some of those, the home occupation permits are a hundred and ten for a new and forty for a renewal. The notifications are sent by the Community Development Clerk to the property owners within a hundred and forty feet. They are reviewed by the Board of Adjustment of the Planning Commission. And the Board of Adjustment is the law-making body of the Planning Commission. They can make final decisions, whereas the Planning Commission itself actually recommends to the council. And then the home occupation applicants must be present at yearly meetings to gain renewal of a permit. The childcare permits are sixty-five for a new permit and sixty-five for an annual renewal fee. Notifications to the property owners within a hundred and forty feet are taken door to door by the applicant. Approval or disapproval is signed on the form, and then they're returned to the clerk. Life safety inspections are required, and they're done by the building inspector annually. Then this is then reviewed by the city council, even though it's pretty much similar to a home occupation in the fact that home occupation is basically a variance to doing a business in a residential area. And childcare is pretty much the same thing. Now, the childcare applicants do not need to be present yearly when their renewal comes up. To be consistent with these types of permits for businesses in residential districts, they could both be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment of the Planning Commission. To be consistent with the notification process of the childcare facilities, then they would need to notify by first-class regular mail, which is sent by the Community Development Clerk, just as we do with the home occupation permits. We feel that renewing the home occupation permits annually, also, we feel that it would not be necessary for the applicant to be present at the public hearing unless there has been a complaint in the year previous to the renewal. And this same situation then would also apply to renewal of the daycare permits. When we have a renewal of our home occupation permits, we basically fill up the council chambers with all these people for home occupations, and there's quite a few of them. We name them all, we take attendance, and if there's not been any complaints, then they basically, we give them their home occupation receipts and they leave. So, and they have asked us several years whether it would be necessary that they come every year. We would also like to have some additional clarification in the Riverton Municipal Code. In the municipal code, the city clerk is designated to receive the application, and it's also called a special use permit instead of a childcare permit. So we'd like to kind of change that and replace it with a childcare use. And then, of course, we change the wording to be the Community Development Clerk rather than the city clerk. We have checked with some other municipalities, and what we have found out, the childcare permits are approved through the Community Development Department. And there's actually some that approve those childcare permits administratively through the Community Development Department without ever going to the Planning Commission, as long as there's not been any people that are opposing the childcare. So that's mostly what we have, there would possibly, we'd probably change the fees for the childcare to accomplish sending out the notifications to the property owners, because the Community Development Clerk would do that, and then the childcare provider would not have to go door to door and try to find the people, and it would be handled the same as it is with home occupation. And, and I think that's probably all we want to say at this time.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council have anything to comment about or question or think about?
Your honor. So, so we would have a home occupancy permit and a childcare permit, and it'd be essentially the same fees, a hundred and ten dollars. And instead of calling it a special permit, we would call it a childcare permit. And everything, so what we're really doing is eliminating the requirements for childcare permits and aligning them with the home occupancy permit and reducing the amount of and increasing the permit fee. Is that about it?
Your honor, and then it wouldn't, childcare permits would not come to council. That's one of the big changes. They would both go to just the Board of Adjustment of the Planning Commission. So that's one of the main issues. The reason we would change the childcare permit, it would, then the applicant would not have to go door to door. We would be sending out those notifications like we do, and then we would know when they came back if they did not approve of those childcare.
Your honor.
Let me get this straight, then. The home occupancy permit would be they have to come in front of the council?
Your honor, I've probably confused this a little because we're asking for about three different things here at this time. One item is basically having the childcare come in front of the Planning Commission or Board of Adjustment rather than the council. One item. The other item that we would like at this time, childcare does not have to come for their renewal in front of the body who's ever going to approve this. And at this time, we have the home occupation renewals coming in front of the body that renews those.
And you want to take that out?
And we'd like to take that part out. We would require both with the childcare and the home occupations, there, when they first apply, we would require them to be present at that time.
I still personally like to see the council approve them instead of just bypassing. Everything is getting to the point where we don't do anything up here, everything's going to be done by staff, and I think the council needs to be known. And I think, personally, I think the people should be in the audience when they apply for renewal. It might be an inconvenience to them, but it's also important to us to see that they are really interested in keeping that permit. That's just my opinion.
Your honor, the home occupations do not come to council as it is right now. Only the childcare. The home occupations are approved by the Board of Adjustment.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
I guess to me, I can see, I guess, the logic behind this because essentially, we have businesses that are operating outside of commercial zoning based on a home occupation permit. And a childcare permit is allowing a different type of business to operate in a non-commercial district. So I, I mean, I guess I can see the logic behind treating both of them in a similar manner. My hesitation, I guess, with the, with the recommendation is, in fact, the, I would agree with Lee in that I think that they should come before the governing body at each year. Not, not only if there's been a complaint, but I, I don't know, it just seems to me like, you know, that's saying, yes, I want to continue this permit, and I'm here to answer any questions. You know, I actually had a home occupation permit or a variance or something along those lines when I first started. And, you know, I, I guess I feel like it, it is something that you should go before the body with. So that would be my one thing, but I, I don't have any problem with the Board of Appeals or is it Board of Adjustments handling the childcare permits as well. Thank you.
Your honor. Who's the Board of Appeals? Who is that?
Board of Adjustments.
Okay, who is that?
Well, that's, so we've got a group of folks that function as the Board of Appeals. Is that a subset of the Planning Commission itself?
Your honor, the Board of Appeals is a totally different group. The Board of Appeals is called the Construction Board of Appeals. This is, the Planning Commission has a group that is their governing body that is the Board of Adjustment.
The Board of Adjustments.
So this is the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is five members of the Planning Commission who sit for the Board of Adjustment. They take care of variances, home occupations, and those types of things.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Yes, your honor. I guess I like the idea of the childcare permits. Informational part for the neighbors surrounding, going through the city, I think it makes it a lot more uniform. And also, then the city knows that they're going to get response back if somebody does have a problem, where if the person went door to door, they might forget to mention that the person didn't want them to and only mention the ones that did. So I think that's a positive thing. I know on my time sitting on the Board of Adjustments, the residents do get a little upset with the process because they do, you get fifty of them filing into the room. We sit down, call their names, usually have no comments from the public. They turn, you know, we vote, say, yes, we approve your home occupation permits. They turn around, walk all out, and it's, it's a little bit problematic. I do understand the point of showing that they want to come and at least show their part. But some of them, it seems to be difficult for them or puts them out a little bit. But that's the council's decision there, but it is a little bit. Fifty people come sit down in the room and then turn around, five minutes later, get up and walk out and take their certificate and go home, so. A lot of us just process, so. Something that, we'd have to set up some kind of procedure where if we did have a complaint, that we made sure we notified them so they could be sitting here if we did have something to discuss. But in my experience, ninety-nine percent of the time, we have, pretty much doing what they're supposed to do. They go home with their permit in their hands.
Your honor.
Thank you. Martin, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, I get, I agree, I think making them, making it consistent makes sense to me. I mean, I guess I don't understand why we differentiate childcare as being a different business than somebody that's running a crafts-type business out of their home. I guess my only question would be is that when you were talking about having them come before the Board of Adjustment every year, is that a Board of Adjustment requirement? Or is that a requirement from, a different, from the council or from the city?
Your honor, that is actually in the municipal code. It's a requirement in the municipal code at this point in time.
Okay, so the municipal code differentiates and says that if you're, for a, for a home business, you have to come every year, but if you're childcare, you don't.
That's correct, your honor.
Again, I, I guess I don't have a preference one way or the other. But again, I would assume there that we would want to make it consistent, that if we have one business show up, then we ought to have all businesses that do it, do it out of their home show up, rather than somehow differentiating and saying that a childcare is something, something different or something special, so. But I do agree, I think we ought to make it consistent both ways. I think, I think if the council doesn't, isn't concerned with home businesses, I guess I'm wondering why we differentiate and why we're concerned about approving childcares.
Your honor, I had one more, okay, question. Now, with regarding the childcare permits, do we verify that they have a state childcare license prior to this also?
Your honor, they kind of go hand in hand, the state. They have, like I said, it goes hand in hand, we work with the state. They have to have, they have to have an application in at the state at the same time, but the state requires them to get approval from us before they'll give them their license. So they require both. And the state is the one that checks on the daycares or the childcare facilities. And we do the inspection on the facility every year, even for the renewals.
At the, at the current time, when the businesses come up for renewal, is how is the public made aware of that fact, or are they?
Your honor, we do, we put out a public hearing notice, so that is done. At the, at the same time, staff goes around and looks. Prior to that renewal, we go around and check all of the home occupations. We have pictures that we take and make sure that they are still in compliance. If, if there has been any complaints, obviously, then we would probably require them to be at the meeting. You know, we could make that as a stipulation. And, and it would be the same thing with the childcare. I mean, if there's any kind of a complaint, they would have to be at the meeting.
Thank you.
But, but you only send out the notices to the neighbors the first time, is that correct?
Your honor, that's correct with both the childcare and the home occupation.
Okay, I've wondered about why we separate childcare from other occupation, home occupations, and I wonder if it isn't related to the fact that we approve all childcare licenses, whether they're in residential districts or not. And so then, so then it's kind of different because childcare is not just a home occupation, it is also a commercial endeavor.
Your honor, we don't approve childcare facilities in commercial areas.
Okay, so this is only for home daycare then?
That is correct.
One category, one category of daycare?
That's correct, your honor, it's because it's a home business. That's the reason we approve childcare facilities in residential areas is because it's a home occupation. We do not approve home occupations in a commercial area because it's allowed in a commercial area.
You have me confused now. You're talking home occupation, and then you're talking childcare. Now, childcares can be in a commercial, right?
Yes, your honor, that is correct.
So do we have, we approve them also, right? Or who approves that childcare in a commercial?
We will, we will inspect the facility for compliance, and the state takes care of the licensing of a commercial facility. But a commercial, the only reason we, we do childcares in, in residential areas is because it's a business in a residential area. That's the only reason we approve a childcare.
So if I have a home, I live in a home where it's in a commercial zone, I could put a childcare in there by getting, only going to the state and not having to go to the city?
That's correct, except for the inspection of the facility because the state requires us to inspect that facility for life safety.
Thank you. My, my job here is to get some kind of consensus. Stephen?
Your honor, I was, I guess it seems like the issue is if you, if you want the approval process to come in front of the council or the Board of Adjustments. Because it seemed like most of the comments that were made in question of that was they felt like they needed to come in front of the council instead of the Board of Adjustments. I, I guess my sense is that the Board of Adjustments, they deal with zoning-type things all the time. I mean, they are more the experts on that type of an issue than anybody. But if you don't feel you want to give up that authority in front of the council, then, you know, maybe we need to make changes related to making the consistency, but they would still come in front of the council, or we just go with the staff's recommendation to move them to the Board of Adjustments.
Your honor, I'm thinking here, if we make these changes, how is the public going to know that we have a home occupancy or a childcare center in their residence that just the neighborhood, just a hundred and forty feet people will know? How about the rest of the neighborhood? How are we, how are they going to know that we have this childcare or home occupancy permit in that area?
Well, they're not.
Through the public notice, I mean, we do public, your honor, sorry. Through public notices that we put in the paper, which we do that for renewal, and we do it for first-time applicants also, as well as the people. And our code says that you have to notify anyone that it will affect more directly, which is within a hundred and forty feet. And we do that both, again, for the home occupation and for the childcare for the first time. We don't do it for either one after that point in time.
Councilman Larson.
When I had my home occupancy permit up on West Bend, I followed those directly, and I just drew a circle of a hundred and forty foot around my property. And so I did not go a hundred and forty-six feet, I went to a hundred and forty feet exactly. And so if you had been beyond that scope, you would have not known. And, and just because it's in the newspaper doesn't mean you're going to read the newspaper when it's published.
Your honor, so I guess the question that comes to my mind is, what is our function as the council? Why do we do this? Is it so that we can make sure that every person who lives in a block knows that there's a business there? Or if a business is so quietly operated that nobody knows it's there and they're properly permitted, does it really matter?
No, because we're elected, and we're elected from those areas, and those people can come directly to you and complain or make their noise, their wishes known.
That's, that's fine, but what I'm, what I'm saying is through our process, is it, is it really our job? I mean, I understand a hundred and forty feet. You know, the people who are that immediately impacted should know there's business operating. But if I live, you know, half a block down, and I can't by observation figure out that you have a business in your house, why does it matter to me? And why is it this council's job to make sure you know that I have a business there? I, I guess I just don't see why it matters.
And I guess, to me, we can't send a certified letter to everybody in town every time we have one of these things. That would be nonproductive. So by publishing it in the paper that we're going to have a public hearing regarding fifty home occupation permits, anybody that is wanting to pay attention has the ability to do that. I think it's posted on the city's website. I mean, the people have adequate ability to find out what's going on if they care about finding out what's going on. And they have their public venue to bring up if they have a problem. I guess to me, the only issue I see is if we don't have them come and be in attendance, and somebody does come and have an issue, then they're not there to respond to that issue, which I think is probably why it was in there to start with. So they've got a double-edged sword there. They either got to not be there if somebody has a complaint, they aren't going to be there to answer it. So if we make them not be in attendance, they run that risk too.
Your honor, may I?
Go ahead.
When there, if there are no complaints, you assume the business is doing the way it's supposed to. If you do get a complaint, which we have done before, it comes to the Community Development Department. We check that out, we call the people, and we, at that point in time, they, we tell them they either need to comply or their home occupation will not be renewed. And this has happened twice that I can think of right off the bat right now. So those processes are still available. If, if we approve these home occupations and we hear nothing, it's probably because the businesses are doing what they're supposed to do. If they do a complaint, there is a process to, to either make the home occupant, occupation permit, applicant, I should say, correct the issue, or we will deny their, we'll take away their home occupation permit, and the Board of Adjustment has that authority to do that. Matter of fact, we did that also fairly recently.
Your honor. Go ahead.
Do we periodically go and inspect anybody at home occupancy or childcare just to go look at them and see if they're doing everything correct? Or do we just? Or do we just do it when we have a complaint?
Your Honor, we check those every year.
No, I, I, the question is, do we go and inspect just to see if they're following the procedure? And the only time we go to see if they're doing anything right is when we have a complaint?
No, Your Honor, we go and inspect the, the home occupations every year prior to their renewal. Every year, we go and check every home occupation to make sure that they are complying, that it doesn't look like they have, um, one example, they don't, they're not allowed to store materials and things, um, where their permit says they are not allowed to, which is mostly outside, we go and check that, we make sure that their signs are in compliance and those types of things. And we check that out, we take pictures and we have had to, um, change some of those, either the people, we just had some signs that had to be changed, we had some materials that had to be, uh, concealed and some different things like that.
Thank you. Okay, let's, maybe, maybe let's break this into separate questions. Okay, so the first question, the first question is, um, are we comfortable with the idea of home ocu-, or of, um, uh, daycare in residential areas being handled by the Board of Adjustments rather than the council? Are we comfortable with that?
Your Honor, I am.
You're comfortable going to the Board of Adjustments? Okay, we've got consensus on that.
Good job.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, are we comfortable, are we comfortable on, on doing the way with the requirement for home occupations to reapply annually in person? I'm not.
Your Honor?
You are.
I would say, provided that they haven't had a complaint filed within that year, I would be comfortable.
Okay, so if no violations, no violations or no complaints, then, then they, they don't have to show up. Okay, is that, we're okay with that? We have consensus on that issue.
Right.
Okay, uh, we have, so then it goes along pretty easy, I think, to say that the Community Development Secretary is the person to which daycare applies now and provides the funding?
Correct.
Instead of the city clerk? Okay, we have consensus on that. Okay? Is there another, was there another question?
Your Honor, the notification of people by mail instead of them?
Oh, notification by mail for daycare or instead of having the daycare person solicit? We're okay with that?
Yeah.
We're okay with that. Right? So when we break it apart into five pieces, we've got, we, so you can go ahead then and, and draft the changes to the code. And then we'll have another opportunity when this comes before the council to discuss these issues as we pass it and then we'll get input from the public and, but we'll go ahead and start the process in that direction. Okay?
Your Honor, I have one more question, I guess. On the home occupation permits, it's a hundred and ten for a new and forty for a renewal. And I assume that's covering the cost of just the notifications every year? And then on the childcare permits, you're gonna go to a hundred and ten?
Your Honor, well, that's something we will look into and probably bring back. What we have to do, we have to do an inspection on the childcare facilities every year, a life safety inspection. So we want to make sure that we include that in that cost as well as the cost for the notifications. So we'll, we'll, we'll bring that back when we bring the ordinance back.
That just an oversight, charging sixty-five and, and sixty-five, the first on this, on our part, because we didn't realize the amount of inspections?
Well, they didn't have to do the mailing part, so that's where the forty-dollar difference probably is.
Yeah, the different, the difference there was that we allowed the, the daycare to, to solicit the, the comment. So they, they did the footwork, the, the going door-to-door, whereas now the Community Development Department will mail that out and, and handle it.
Thank you.
Okay, and so you'll come back to us with recommendations on fees as well?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item of business is malt beverage catering permits process, city administrators' report.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, the city has three kinds of permits that the council is currently approving. We've got malt beverage, catering permits and open containers. Uh, these permits are for twenty-four hours only. A catering permit, just to give you a background of what they are, if, if you're not sure exactly what they are, catering, catering permit may be issued to anyone holding a retail liquor license. It entitles the holder to sell alcoholic or malt beverages off-premise. So that's a catering permit and that's the one we generally see on, on our council agendas is catering permits. A malt beverage permit may be issued to any responsible person or organization. This is for the sale of malt beverage only. Typically, we see those at the county fair, when the Fremont County Fair is applying, they apply for malt beverage, they only serve malt beverages, they can't serve other alcoholic, um, containers. And then the open container may be issued to any applicant and allows you to have an open container in a public area. And I think we have a couple parks that's allowed to have alcohol, Sunset Park, I believe is one of them. They'll have class reunions there or weddings and they apply for an open container permit to have alcohol in the park. These permits have been placed on the consent agenda for the last eighteen to twenty months with little to no discussion or opposition on, on those. The current Riverton Municipal Code reads that the malt beverage or a catering permit may be approved or denied at the sole discretion of the city council without notice or public hearing to any person holding a retail liquor license. Uh, the application form when submitted and signed contains criteria that must be complied with in order to receive the approval from the city clerk and the police chief. It has been suggested that in order to streamline the process and not impede potential catering for special events with licensees, that administration could approve these permits. As you can see by the spreadsheet that was included in the packet, uh, we don't issue a lot of them, um, more so in the catering permits than any of them, very few malt beverage and very few open container. Staff, um, will spend the same amount of time processing the application, whether it goes to the council or not. Uh, the only change would be potential improvement of efficiency through the timing of submission and approval of the permit applications. And that goes to our last meeting that we had where someone was trying to get it through the process, they didn't know exactly the process and then we, we made an exception for that. But if this was done all through the staff level, we could have it done in a one-to-two day timeframe compared to coming through council where you have to plan quite a bit ahead because sometimes council meeting, our regular council meetings are on the first and third Tuesdays and those are the times where they get approved. Uh, the chief of police is in support of this action. The staff has always, the staff always has the option, if we don't feel comfortable in making that decision, um, that we could kick that to the council. And it goes the other way too, that if, if, if the staff didn't approve, let's say, a catering permit, the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal that to the council and have that overturned if they would like so. So, couple alternatives, uh, we can leave it the way it is. I, I think we've talked about this in the, in the past. Or we can change the ordinance to just do one or two of these instead of all three of them. Because with the twenty-four hour, you've got the catering permit, malt beverage and open container. If you felt like some of those should still stay at the council, you could choose to do that or you could do all of them. Um, that's pretty much your options.
Any discussion?
Your Honor, here's my proposal. If we move, make this move for this, uh, the city administrators to do this, I would like to see at least three people, city, city clerk, city administrator or public works director, community development or the police department. And if, and all three must approve the permit. If one person doesn't approve the permit, then it comes to city council. That's a, to me, that's another alternative. I, I just don't want to see one person handling the permits and saying, okay.
Yeah, Your Honor, right now, we have, there's two people involved. It comes through the city clerk, that's approved, then it goes to the police chief and then he approves and writes comments on it of any conditions that need to be added and then it comes to the council meeting. So right now, it's two and if you wanted to add another one, I guess that's... Thank you.
Chief, when you, when you review these, I mean, I'm, I'm, I can't imagine that you don't go back through and if you've had a problem with them before, that, you know, you're concerned about it since, let's be honest, alcohol is the big, one of our big problems here in Riverton. Have you ever had an issue, not so much with the catering, but like with the open container? I know we had the open container come through for what, uh, when the, when they were doing the block things down on Main Street there this past summer and stuff like that. Again, I'm, I'm new to this, have we had a big problem in the past with anybody having an open, you know, when they've done that with the open containers?
Your Honor, we haven't had a single issue at any of these events that have been off-premise permits. The, the few open container, uh, permits that have been issued have been for like, uh, school reunions in the park and they've been very mature, we haven't had any issues with those. Uh, and usually the only malt beverage permits, I mean, no one's having keggers and coming and asking for a permit. They've, I think they've exclusively the last two or three years been the county fairs malt beverage permits. So honestly, we haven't had any issues with these off-premise permits at all.
Again, sir, I'm, I'm very comfortable having, you know, that expertise, you know, reviewing it. I mean, basically, you know, he's giving a stamp of approval before it even comes to the council on him. I trust the PD's judgment in those things.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
This then means that Ms. Jennings could come in tomorrow or next week versus rescheduling with the, the city council to get a permit. And so this enables business to do business versus discourages it or limits it with time.
That's right, Your Honor, that's exactly right.
Your Honor, I, I would agree with Lee's proposal that we have three people sign off on that, so we have three, it's not just one person doing it, which sounds like we're almost there. And also, I think we do need to have a reasonable time ahead of their event that they need to do, so we, so staff has, you know, a reasonable amount of time to process that, even if it's three days, let's say. So that, and, and then I need, think we need to stick to that pretty tightly. But staff needs adequate time to get it to the chief, get it to the city clerk, get it to whoever else that we decide needs to do.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, John.
So I guess my gut kind of tells me that, that in practice, uh, catering permit is probably something that could be processed a lot more quickly than maybe an open container permit, that I know the chief has had to go and discuss how you're gonna barricade and separate areas and things with different bars and I don't know as far as the malt beverage, but I guess I would say that, you know, I don't think we need to have necessarily the same timeframe for all of these types of permit. I think that staff should use their discretion when they come back to us for this change and make sure that they're not pigeonholed into one, one timeframe. And then the other thing that comes to mind is, chief, do you feel like perhaps, um, you know, allowing administration, administrative approval of these catering permits unless the organization had had a, um, you know, selling underage or some sort of violation perhaps as maybe the stick? Sort of, you know, if they mess up, then they do have to come before the council. I know when things are a pain in the butt, I tend to avoid having to go through that and might be one more to encourage businesses to stay up on that. I don't know what your thoughts are.
You know, Your Honor, to, just to go back a couple, three years, I was against the issuing of extra off-premise permits. And so I feel like when I, when I speak tonight, I don't have a bias in favor of those liquor establishments. The, the bottom line is that I, I don't believe a single catering permit's been turned down or even really discussed. And so, so the issue, I guess, is that if, if council really has a, is really going to take a, uh, in-depth look at each one of these permits, then that process should stay with you. If, if it's no more than a rubber stamp, uh, that it's going to be approved because staff's already looked at it, then, then I feel like we're wasting your time and we're wasting the business's times to come, wait for them to schedule to come before you. To me, that's the issue.
Thank you.
Is, is this an issue, the city code issue? Do we, is, is this process in code right now that we would have to, so we would have to modify code?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the other question that I have is, do we need to revisit, as part of this process, we probably should revisit the requirements that we have for a permit, to get a permit?
Your Honor, are you talking about the application itself?
Yeah, yeah, filling out the application, the requirements for the application, we're not gonna, we're, we're gonna shut down an hour before the party's over, we're gonna, you know, those rules that we kind of put together, do we need to? As, as part of our process, we should go back through that and make sure that what we've got is a, is a workable permit that's easy enough for, for staff to say yes or no on.
Yes, that, Your Honor, that has not been visited, I believe, since two thousand eleven or through two thousand twelve. What we informed the applicant at the time is that when they sign that application, they are agreeing to the terms of that application. And we did have that come up a month ago where an individual didn't, didn't understand that, that when we turn the application over, this is what you're agreeing to and this is what you've signed off on.
Yes.
So we'd be happy to bring that in front of you again to revisit that.
Okay, so as we make this, when we get to the point where we're gonna put this into code and, and make those adjustments, that'll take three readings, we'll have lots of opportunity for people for input and discussion at that time. But let's, let's, I guess we've got, I think we have consensus that we'll move ahead and, and, and in that direction. Okay? All right, thank you. The next item of business that we have is, um, the airport project and we have been asked to have a five-minute recess.
We have the pre-meeting one.
Oh, pre-meeting? Where did I, oh, I see it, got it. Okay, I'm sorry, that was such a short line, I jumped over the top of it. Okay, do we have a city administrators' report on pre-meeting?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Baker asked this topic to be presented, I think he initially wanted to bring it up at the last meeting. But more specifically, um, should we be holding a, a pre-meeting? So everyone's aware and probably the most of the public's aware for some time now. Historically, we started in August of two thousand four, we started at six-thirty, we had a pre-meeting and that would go for a half hour. In December of two thousand eleven, the time was changed to six-forty-five, I think mainly because there wasn't a whole lot to talk about and so it, it was shortened by fifteen minutes. Pre-meetings are held in the bullpen, I don't know why we call it the bullpen, but it's always been the bullpen. It's kind of back in City Hall here, um, in, in a bigger area. Everybody, including the media, media is invited to that meeting. A meeting starts with a prayer and then I usually go over any changes to the agenda and ask if there's any questions about what's on the agenda. In most cases, there's nothing really to discuss and they're really short meetings. Other times, they seem to be a little useful in the sense of giving you a heads-up of what may be coming in a, in a council meeting agenda item. But on the other hand, I think, you know, those could probably be shared in a normal council meeting if we wanted to do it that way. So the question before the council is, do you want to continue with the pre-meeting? What about the prayer? Do you feel comfortable in doing the prayer at the pre-meeting or do you prefer to do that in, in the council meeting? And so other alternatives, I say no change, we just continue, continue on with how we're doing it. Uh, we do no pre-meeting, we do pre-meeting without a prayer or we do prayer and council meeting. And so those are a few of the options you could consider. But, uh, I know some people feel a little uncomfortable about the pre-meeting, they feel like it's a, a meeting before the meeting and what's really going on in there. like it's a, a meeting before the meeting and what's really going on in there. And so, uh, it's really up to you to decide if, if you like that or you don't like it, and if there's consensus, we'll do whatever.
Thank you. So, this is, this is my issue, so let me, let me talk to it for just a second. I just, I just don't want to, um, have us in a position of where, um, we're conducting, we're conducting business, I mean, we got this, this is all televised, and we've made a real effort to make all of our city business right up front, so that everybody can participate to the fullest extent. And, and, and so then we have this little pre-meeting, and then, and then Mayor Worfness wanted to have prayer before the meeting, and, and we have a Supreme Court decision that says that that's fine to do that. And, and we could do it as part of this meeting. I mean, the state legislature opens with a prayer every day, um, you know, and so, the county commissioners do the same thing. And so, we could certainly do that as part of this meeting. Um, but what I want to make sure is that everybody around this table is comfortable with what we're doing. So, if, if we're fine with the pre-meeting, and we want to join, we want to continue to do that, because occasionally, we'll have some issue that we're, we're, an agenda item that we're just not ready for. Uh, we want to talk about that for a minute, and then when we're coming in here, we're all kind of primed up to understand we're gonna eliminate that item off the agenda. Um, then, uh, you know, and it, and it helps us maybe with surprises. Um, if there's something new that's just come up, that we might have to add to the agenda, it gives us an opportunity to discuss that for a few minutes, and that way, we come in here feeling a little bit more prepared. But nonetheless, even though this is a public meeting, you know, in the back room at the City Hall, um, it's still something that took place that wasn't right here in council chambers. So, I mean, does anybody have any comments they'd like to make?
Your Honor, I, I always have a bad taste in my mouth for the pre-meeting, even though it's open to the public, I sort of go along with what you're saying, because I think we ought to just start the city council meeting, and we're gonna have a prayer, we ought to have it at the beginning of this meeting, and, and if there's something that comes up, discuss it right here in front of the TV cameras and say, "We're not ready to talk about that agenda item," or whatever it is that we're gonna talk about. And I, I think the impression of having a pre-meeting is worse than what the pre-meeting is by far, because there's probably not much talked about, and I don't have any experience other than last week, so.
Your Honor. And I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Bailey, that we, uh, should eliminate the pre-meeting. The only thing I ask is if something comes up that we have to make a change to the agenda, I think normally, with all of us having iPads or, or computers here, we can get an email before that comes up. It's not gonna come up two minutes before we have the pre-meeting, and we could all be informed of what the changes or what administration wants changes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Your Honor, one thing we could do is add something to the agenda, changes to the agenda, you know, we could have that as an, as an agenda item on there, so if we did have changes, then that'd be the time to bring it up, instead of interrupting.
We could just simply say, "Are there any changes of the agenda?", and then, and then, and then we could vote to approve the agenda. Okay?
Your Honor, um, I've, I've found that pre-meetings do sometimes be helpful, I mean, I've never once felt uncomfortable that we were conducting any sort of meaningful business or decision-making at a pre-meeting. Um, I, I think that they're very much procedural in nature, and, you know, saying, "Well, you know, we're gonna take agenda item number 12 off because so-and-so can't make it," or "we need to add agenda, this agenda," or, or like last week, you know, Stephen gave a heads-up that Ms. Jenny might be coming to talk to us because of the issue that had arisen. And so, I, I think that, uh, I guess for me, I, I actually like having the pre-meeting, um, although I do understand that those things could be, could be handled in, in open session, it's just, I don't know, I guess, to me, it feels like, as council people, we come in knowing what it is that we're going to be doing that day from the get-go.
Your Honor, I, I, I'm 100% for the, the pre-meeting where we have it is what you're really asking. If we have it in the bullpen, we don't have a camera. We have the press and everybody else there, but we don't have the public. And there would be no difference for having it here. I mean, if we can stand to give the, uh, pledge of allegiance, we can certainly stand to give a prayer.
Sir, I, I'm not sure I have a, have a preference, you know, I agree that if we have changes that, uh, we're gonna make to the agenda and things we want to discuss, that we can discuss them right here at, at 7 o'clock and it kicks off. Again, but again, I, I do not have a problem having the pre-meeting back there, because again, I, I know we've had people from the, uh, from the audience go back there, so, I mean, I think people realize that it's open to the public, and they're free to go back there and, and sit and listen to what we talk about back there. Um, again, I'm, I'm kind of into the mode of whether you, you can have it back there or have it, have it here, I, I'm not sure I see a big difference either way.
This does not take, uh, code change, right?
No.
Just my, just my decision, huh? Raw, raw power.
[laughing]
I'll let you all know how it turns out, thank you. Okay, our next item of business is this, uh, airport, right? And we're gonna take a five-minute break while we try to get Missy White on the telephone. Thank you. Uh, I'll call this, uh, back to order, and, uh, we'll begin this discussion, um, about the Riverton Regional Airport, and, uh, we're, uh, we're happy to welcome Missy White, uh, on the telephone with us, who is, she is the, um, Chair for the, um, Air Service Task Force, and, um, so we'll, and I see we've got a, a little slideshow for us today, so, uh, take it away, Administration.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the purpose of this, uh, presentation is really to, to get our new council members, welcome them, bring them up to date, if, if they're not already, about the situation we have with the airport. And when I say situation, just the conditions that we have, um, give you some general FAQs. Um, and then we want to go over and, and talk about some of the efforts made by our Air Service Task Force and, and Missy in specific, um, specific to her work, excuse me. Another note that I want to just bring up before we really get into this is, um, in relation to the work of the Air Service Task Force, is they'd like to create, as you've already been made aware, a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization to help their efforts. It's a standalone organization that will help them, uh, solicit information to improve air service, um, to also go around and see if there's any way to supplement the current air service that we have. And so, as we're going through this information, um, we want to just make you aware that there will be a future resolution possibly proposed, um, dependent upon the feelings of the council. And so, in order to do that, let's, uh, let's just talk about the airport in general, and I'll stand at the, the podium to do this, and then maybe I'll sit back down, and we'll go through some questions and... Okay, so, some basic information about Riverton Regional Airport, which as you know, um, has an acronym of R-I-W, which I'll probably refer to that frequently throughout. Some quick facts, um, the first terminal, uh, was built in 1959 to accommodate commercial air service. Uh, the current terminal was built in 1998. We have two runways we operate, the main runway is 1028, as you're well aware, that's 8,203 feet long and, uh, width of 105 feet. Our crosswind runway is 119, that's 4,800 feet long, 75 feet wide. When we talk about R-I-W, we know it's a commercial service airport, um, but it's classified as a C-2 airport, meaning our main runway is classified as a C-2 runway. What does that mean? Um, this is a classification that's developed so that people flying into our airport can understand, um, basically, how our runway is built and what we can accommodate. The letter C, um, references the airspeed that our runway can accommodate. Um, I won't break that down. The, uh, Roman numeral 2, uh, that's based on the wingspan and the size of the, the tail as well. And so, when we say we're a C-2 airport, that really references the type of airplanes or jets that can land at our airport. Um, frequently, it's been said, you know, back in the heyday, we accommodated 737s back in the eighties and before. And that's because when our air, um, strip was built, it was originally designed as a C-3, um, runway. Now, we're out of standard with that C-3, and now, let's go to the next slide, we can kind of, this is a, a cool graphic that we got from JAVIATION that breaks down these classifications. If we look, um, the C-3, as you see, that accommodates a 737, and again, that relates to the airspeed of the, of the aircraft taking off and landing on the runway strip, and then the size of the wingspan and the height of the tail. Uh, currently, we're at the C-2, um, on our runway 1028, and our crosswind, 119, is classified as a B-2. If we look at that image there, the Beechcraft 1900, that's actually the aircraft that services our airport, that's what Great Lakes frequently flies out of our, out of our airport. Um, so there's some basic information. The administrative support structure, obviously, is the city council, since this is a municipally-owned airport, we're one of the few in the state, actually, as far as commercial airports go. You as city council have the overriding influence on this airport. Um, as Mayor Baker already mentioned, we have an Air Service Task Force, and that was created just recently in the spring to help guide the city council, guide staff, to examine ways that we could possibly improve our air service at our, um, at R-I-W. We also have the Airport Board, which has been in place for some time. The Airport Board really focuses on the operations and, um, really, the infrastructure and the actual RUT airport itself. Um, so between those two, um, advisory boards, uh, the city council receives information, and so does staff. Staff, uh, as we just follow the organizational chart, everything flows through Mr. Weaver, obviously. Myself is the Public Works Director and Airport Manager, help coordinate those efforts, and I've got a great, um, Airport Division Manager, uh, in Paul Griffin, who has multiple years of experience, not only in, um, the air industry, but also just with the city of Riverton alone. Um, he's been here for, what, close to 20 years or over, coming up on 20, so we're glad to have him. And then we have Airport Operations Staff that help, um, do all the operations necessary to run our airport. Some of these things you already know, but it's, it's worth going through, I think. Our airport is governed by certain regulatory, um, requirements, and then we also have guidelines that we follow. The first of which is by the Federal Aviation Administration. You oftentimes hear that we're a Part 139 airport. What does that mean? Uh, that references Federal Aviation Regulation Part 139. In bre- in brevity, uh, basically, Part 139 airports refer to commercial-operized, um, airports that can accommodate, um, aircraft with more than nine seats. This is what, this is what we run. And in order, uh, to, to fall in line with these regulations, the FAA must issue an operating certificate. That operating certificate guarantees that we, as an airport, will provide the necessary police, fire, and emergency, um, services for these commercial and even general aviation flights. Um, this, this file you're seeing on the side, I mean, it just breaks down, it's a little hard to read, but Part 139 really covers a, a broad array of regulations, anywhere from the NAVAids to, uh, paved areas, unpaved areas, markings, sign of snow removal, et cetera, et cetera. Um, another point to be made is that, in order to have this operating certificate, the FAA comes in and inspects us regularly. We are fine, if we are found out of compliance, we lose that operating certificate, and therefore lose our ability to not only receive federal funds, but also to, to operate under that Part 39 definition. The next thing that, uh, we're regulated by is the Transportation Security Agency. As we're, we're well aware, um, 9/11 really affected air travel and travel in general. Um, the regulation that we, we fall under is the Transportation Security Regulation Title 59, Part 1542, go ahead and look that up, I'm sure you will. Um, but essentially, what it's requiring of us, um, outside of the regular screenings, the baggage checks, et cetera, et cetera, that we have to have an airport security plan in place. Furthermore, we have to have an airport security coordinator. Um, this is, uh, managed through Paul Griffin, and, uh, Mylan Vinich, uh, serves that purpose for our airport. Wyoming Department of Transportation also regulates us, um, that's through the Division of Aeronautics and the Aeronautics Commission. Uh, not only do they provide a guiding influence for all airports and aviation operations in the state of Wyoming, um, but they also do their part to enhance the economic well-being of our communities associated with air travel. Uh, their goal is really to produce safe and efficient aviation systems, therefore, they check into our, um, procedures for snow removal, they check into our procedures for anything related to aviation that affects our efficiency and safety. We have a guiding document, um, that's our Airport Master Plan. This is updated on an average of every 10 years, similar to the master plan for the city. This is a living document, um, it's a guiding document. And really, I've listed some of the, the main things that this master plan is intended to, to cover. Um, specifically, it forecasts in the future 10, 20 years and beyond the needs and demands of our airport. Um, it does analyses on capacity, facility requirements and upgrades, technical studies, airport plans, financial plans, um, there's a community index, and really, it helps us also go through our capital improvement plan. So, outside of having these regulations that are, um, put upon us, we also have a guiding document. Um, the current document that we have was, um, produced in 2011, and, uh, our engineering firm associated with the airport, JAVIATION, produced that for us. Okay, let's talk about airport activity, R-I-W. Um, we provide a, a broad range of services, um, outside of just commercial and, uh, general aviation services. Um, we have a fixed base operator, many of you know this, uh, deals with fuel, maintenance, um, and then they also supplement us with auxiliary power. We have air ambulance services, there's an airport cafe that we don't necessarily attribute sometimes to the airport, but in operating the airport, we also provide space for lease for, um, the cafe without the airport, um, that wouldn't be an amenity for our community. Furthermore, um, we provide services for maintaining runways and taxiways in our region, in our county. Um, this facilitates our general aviation, it facilitates chartered, um, flights coming into our region and county. Included in that maintenance is our lighting systems and also our aviation instrument systems. Um, so, now we've gone to, to kind of transition, we talked about, um, the general uses of our airport, um, but let's go through the actual stakeholders and who uses them because of the services that we, we provide. Um, as we're well aware, provide passenger flights, um, that's through currently Great Lakes Aviation. Um, we've been with Great Lakes since 1998, um, they've provided our air service for commercial operations since then. Um, and until 2006, we were subsidized under the essential air services through the federal government. Um, that stopped in 2000- Um, that stopped in two thousand and six. Many of you are, I think, familiar with Essential Air, it's E A S. Um, but that originated in nineteen seventy-eight to help airports. In fact, figure I research was seven hundred and forty-six airports. It helped them from being forced to close that subsidy. The bad news is we can't go back to E A S. Um, I think in the Q and A that Mr. Weaver provided, um, anyone after a certain date in, uh, President Obama's administration can no longer go back to E A S services. That was, uh, cut from the budget. So that's not an option for us anymore since we abandoned the A S services in two thousand and six. Moving on, we have, uh, chartered flights, um, cargo flights. Uh, in fact, we typically have, um, chartered, excuse me, cargo flights twice a day from companies like U P S. Um, we also have corporate flights. Uh, these can service our businesses in the region, ranging from, uh, we've tracked Encana, Devon, ConocoPhillips, Safeway, Maverick Convenience Stores regularly fly in to, uh, do inventory and inspections on their businesses here. Um, First Interstate Bank, Wells Fargo, et cetera, et cetera. This graphic I think is, is somewhat interesting. This shows the departures and arrivals from R I W across the nation. Um, obviously we have a strong concentration in the state of Wyoming and our adjacent states, but I thought it was kinda cool that we had flights registered in Maine, New Jersey, Washington, Georgia, North Carolina. Now these obviously cover not just the services that Great Lakes provide us. We go on Denver and back in Warland, that's it. Um, these are the chartered flights that come in and out of our airport. And it's kinda cool to see how we service the entire country in a way. We talk about implantments so often. I know that's been something that, uh, frequently has come up because it has a relation to our airport improvement program and subsequent, gotta slow down a little bit, excuse me, subsequent grants, uh, provided through that A I P. Um, since two thousand and three, uh, as you can, you can see, we constantly have been above that ten thousand threshold. Um, it's only been this year that we really fell and there's a dramatic drop in that. Part of the explanation behind that, um, is the regulations, the recent regulations, um, that the FAA produced and how it has had an effect on our air service provider, Great Lakes. Um, in two thousand and ten, the FAA really started looking at, um, increasing safety as far as air travel goes. Part of that was to increase the required flight hours for first officers, what we commonly call co-pilots. Um, that was increased, as I said, to fifteen hundred hours, previously was at two hundred and fifty. Unfortunately, Great Lakes has had a hard time accommodating that requirement. And as a result, have had difficulty, um, being consistent in the flights that they offer because they could not provide pilots necessary to fly our plight, our flights. And much of this, I think you're already aware of. The other regulation that really affected this year's implantments are the fatigue hours, um, associated with pilots. Um, this is again, a, a newer regulation that came about. The final rule, I think, for the fatigue hours was, uh, two thousand and thirteen. The final ruling for the, um, first officers was two thousand and fourteen. Um, the fatigue hours require ten hour minimum rest. Prior, prior to that, it was eight hours. And, um, this is, I think, a time for a good baseball analogy. Um, just to keep it light, I guess. When we think about air service providers, um, you have the major leagues, the Uniteds, the Deltas, et cetera, et cetera, um, the larger corporations. However, there are minor league operations and that would be the Great Lakes and others. Now, if you think about the farm system in the baseball, in basically in baseball in general, um, typically the farm systems feed major leagues. That's how it works in aviation as well. The farm system aviation providers, a lot of times feed pilots into the, to the big league air service carriers. So as, as Great Lakes has had these pilots that have been trained up and are under flying and earning hours, oftentimes they lose those pilots to the big leagues, so to speak. Um, unfortunately, when these regulations came down, it kinda hit them all at once. Um, and I couldn't speak intelligently as to how they planned for these regulations. Um, but we know that it affected them poorly. And as a result, it's affected the implantments and de-plantments of our airport. That's my baseball reference. Um, this is a, a graph showing similar information, a little bit easier to read. Um, as you can see, implantments, and again, to define implantments, that's people taking off, de-plantments or people landing. Um, since two thousand and three, i- it's a fairly common statistic. But we've ranged from ten thousand, we've gotten up to seventeen thousand, averaged over the last five years around fourteen thousand. And this year we're at seventy-eight hundred, it's last year. To continue on with who uses our airport, who are our stakeholders, um, we provide air ambulance services. This, this slide really focuses on the medical relief that our airport provides our community and our county. Um, classic lifeguard operates a helicopter and fixed wing King Air from our airport. But outside of that, there are various other liflight operations that use Riverton Regional Airport. Some examples of those are the children's hop, excuse me, the Children's Hospital in Denver, Buildings, Billings Cardiac Center and Salt Lake City Burn Center. Um, we have tracked live flights associated with those services in our neighboring states. Um, we also have tracked several medical doctors and dentists that actually charter flights into our, our county by using Riverton Regional Airport to service their customers and clients in Fremont County. Continuing forward, uh, our airport, uh, facilitates agricultural pest control. Um, Wind River Agriculture and Sky Aviation lease space from us each summer so they can go through their, um, pest control. The Bureau of Land Management also leases space from us. Um, again, we, we operate Fulmer's Cafe. Um, they're currently our, our leased resident and tenant, excuse me, resident and tenant. And then our, uh, rental car services at the airport. Um, we currently have leases with Hertz and Avis Rental Car Agencies. So that's kind of a, a brief picture of who uses our airport, what we use our airport for in our community. Now to facilitate the uses of our airport, we have operations. And again, this is coordinated through Paul Griffin and our, uh, other employees. This is also part of our requirement to be a part one thirty-nine airport. Um, and who doesn't like pictures of big trucks? So let's put them on here and look at them. The, the one on the top left is our, um, our truck is, that, uh, is there for emergencies and fire. Um, our snow blower on the top right, pretty cool windrow, I think. I, I was gonna make a joke, but I'm gonna refrain. Um, and then we have a new snowplow, uh, that's the one at the bottom. Um, so as far as our operations go at the airport, not only do we provide these services that you see in the pictures here, but, uh, we mow the weeds down. We patrol our perimeter, uh, it's eight miles of fencing that our guys go around. Um, they perform the police functions as well. Uh, we, we have been able to subsidize the police and fire operations and the emergency operations into all of our employees. Therefore, we have, when we have flights coming in and out of our airport, our employees are able to go up as reserve officers from the police department and assist TSA and can comply with their, excuse me, regulations that they have for us. And then they're also able to, um, switch hats and be our, um, our service providers as well. Talk about finances. Operational expenses, um, these expenses cover, um, the activities that we were just talking about. In fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen, we have a budget of operational expenses of six hundred and five thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Over the last five years, we've had an average of six hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately in operation expenditures. These expenditures, um, are supported by both the Airport Enterprise Fund, um, included in that fund, but I should parse out right now our, our grants as well, and then the general fund. Go over operational revenues. Um, in fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, we have a budgeted revenue right now of three hundred and fifty-six thousand and change with an extra zero, ignore that. Um, an average, R I W operations really sit around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and those are revenues generated from these operations. This is fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, and I know Mr. Weaver included this in the Q and A packet you've already received. Um, we receive monies from the passenger facility tax. Uh, those are funds associated with, um, airline ticket sales. It's four dollars and fifty cents a ticket. Um, the administration of that, um, is a little bit complicated. We're working through it, but, uh, those funds are available to help us, um, with capital projects and, and other operations related to the airport. County commissioners realize the impact that R I W has on our region and they provide monies in the amount of ninety-five thousand. That, if my memory serves me, they have provided ninety-five thousand since about two thousand and thirteen, maybe it's two thousand and twelve. That, that figure has been constant over the last few years. The airport security grant funds, that really subsidize and helps us with those police operations I mentioned. And that's funding that comes from the, the, the federal government. Gasoline tax is a revenue that we receive. We lease ground at our airport. Um, some of that has to do with the airport cafe. Some of it has to do with the land that hangars, um, are currently situated on. Uh, the fuel farm rental and the FBO fees, we receive money from that. Rent a cars, we receive, uh, money from their operations. Great Lakes Aviation, um, they are charged landing fees and we receive money from that. The TSA lease, again, that's another lease that we have for land at our terminal, E C I building lease and slanties monies. This is constituting fiscal year fourteen, fifteen again. But these revenue sources, um, from these funds are fairly constant from year. Now grant related revenues, I already mentioned the airport improvement program. This is from the federal government and its sole purpose is to help in, in the investment of capital infrastructure at our airport. Um, again, it's tied to implantment totals. Basically, if you have ten thousand implantments or greater, you get a million bucks to use for capital improvement projects. And that's not a check that's sent to us, that's something that we request as, as a refund, um, for the improvement projects. It's a matching program as well. The federal government, um, provides ninety-three point seven five percent. The state participates at three point seven five percent and local government, our match, um, associated with that A I P program is two point five. We also receive monies from the state of Wyoming, um, outside of the A I P, A I P program. Uh, this is again, oftentimes used for capital investment. And depending on the use of the actual investment being made, um, those monies are given to us at a ninety, ten grant, an eighty, twenty grant, or even a fifty, fifty grant. And again, it's dependent upon the type of project that it is subsidizing. So this gets to the final funds that we receive for R I W. And this is the subsidy that we, we often refer to that comes from the general fund. The general fund contributes to both the operations and capital projects of our airport. Um, over the last eight years, that average that helps us towards both operations and capital projects is three hundred and five thousand dollars this year. You know, we're gonna be a little bit more expensive. We have a major runway reconstruction project going on, it's gonna be a fifteen million dollar project. Um, we have received monies from the A I P program. We're expected to receive, um, discretionary funding as well of about twelve million, twelve million dollars, excuse me, from the federal government. Um, and then we have the match that we have to consider. So, um, because of that project, those funds are gonna be a little bit more than what has been the average over the last eight years. To give you an idea of the cost, just in, in relation to our A I P programs, which is the runway reconstruction and also the localizer replacement. Um, the localizers are one of the NAV AIDS associated with runway ten twenty-eight. Um, and as you're well aware, got a, a gradient issue currently with our main runway. Um, that gradient issue is non-compliant with FAA regulations and we have to improve that. Um, in doing so, that will help us return to that C three category and get out of the C two category, excuse me, C two category and allow us to accommodate larger jets, larger aircraft that we can service our community. Um, so getting back to the cost of that, that project for the localizers and the runway, we're expecting around four hundred thousand dollars, um, for that project alone, for our contribution, that two point five percent. I say around because we've had several estimates at this point. There's no way to really know, um, what that cost will be until bids are opened. That project is gonna go this year, you're well aware of that. We're hoping to get that going in April, weather contingent. Also contingent on when we're gonna receive that discretionary funding of twelve million dollars from the federal government. It's a hundred and seventy day scheduled project. So if we start in April, that's gonna continue through the month of October. Um, this is something that the city has been aware of for some time. It's been part of our capital improvement plan for some time and this is the year it's hidden. So while it is gonna be an expense on us, it's a necessary improvement. Um, it's an improvement that will help us provide better air service and it will help us remain, um, complying with FAA regulations. If we don't remain compliant with FAA regulations, we then jeopardize the grants that we could receive as a part one thirty-nine airport. Um, if we are not compliant to those inspections that they do, we lose our operating certificate and therefore lose our opportunity to receive grant funding. Um, and maybe a clarification to make, we talked about the one million dollars associated with the ten thousand implantments. If we go below the ten thousand implantments, that entitlement fund of one thou- of one million dollars, excuse me, drops to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we didn't make the implantments in twenty fourteen. Uh, we, we expect that we can try for a waiver, even though we didn't meet that ten thousand implantment. Been in touch with representatives from the FAA. And because of our historical ability to fly ten thousand implantments or greater, we can make an argument, this is an anomaly to the services we provide from our airport. And that is directly tied to the hardships our air service provider had in relation to the FAA regulations. Um, we will just have to see how that plays out, but we expect that that is a possibility. Um, there's also, um, I'm saying I'm a lot, so please forgive me. There's legislation going before Congress right now to exempt airports like ourselves who had difficulty meeting that ten thousand implantment this year. And we're not the only airport and, um, Great Lakes services many people. And, and it's, it's been a systemic problem for regional airports. Therefore, um, Congress is gonna review this bill. And if it passes, we will be able to use two thousand and twelve implantment numbers for two thousand and fourteen. This is important because with the construction that's going on in calendar year two, twenty fifteen, it's very likely and most likely, um, a known fact that we're gonna fall below our implantments just because our runway is gonna be under construction for an amount of time. We will be able to continually provide air service, but it will be disrupted somewhat, whether it be on our main runway or on our crosswind, crosswind runway. Let's keep this moving, I think we're getting a little wordy on this slide. The last one I wanna talk about and then we can kinda open things up is the economic impact. I think it's safe to say that the airport provides an economic stimulus to the region. It provides a stimulus to the county, to the city. To quantify that is obviously subjective. It's difficult to quantify anything with, with economics. This is a study, I think many of you have seen already, that was performed by the Aeronautics Division. Um, they hired three consulting firms and, uh, published this twenty fourteen. Now these, these figures are related solely to our airport. And again, economics is a subjective study. Um, it measures direct relations of the jobs we have, the payroll, the outputs, but then it, it includes multipliers. it, it includes multipliers, not just the people who are currently employed by the airport, but also the surrounding community who have jobs or are, um, stimulated, I should say, because of the existence of the airport. That's what the first column refers to. Um, and again, I'm not here to defend this or explain it because we didn't perform the study. This is something that, that YDOT helped us with. I, I, I think there should be something to be said about however, the two graphs that are below the first one. The first, the second graphic, it covers commercial visitor spending. If we ignore the economics of the jobs it provides or even the payroll, if we look down to the output, that's dollars being traced to commercial service, um, and passengers coming through our community from our airport. And that was, uh, rated at five million dollars, a little over. Um, similar to that from our general aviation visitor spending, about one point six million. This information was collected through surveys. It was collected, um, Paul mentioned that he was handing out surveys at this time and that's how a lot of this was reported. We were giving surveys to people who were actually landing, taking off and using our airport. So, um, those are some numbers that we have from a study that YDOT performed. Again, economics, but I think it's safe to say that we have an economic benefit from operating an airport in our community. That's, I guess, Airport One One. And from here on out, I think what we want to do to transition and to provide you the opportunity to ask questions, to receive answers and to explore, um, maybe our feeling about the airport and some of the direction we want to move going forward. Um, let's, uh, I'm going to return to my desk and I'll go over a little bit briefly some of the activities related to our air service task force. And then Missy White could maybe supplement anything that I say and she'll be available for questions relating to our air service task force. And I'm going to breeze through this because many of you have already read this in your staff report. Um, but again, essentially, last spring, it became apparent that we needed some help with the reliability of our air service provider. Um, it was apparent that we were struggling with reliability, with frequencies of flight and therefore, um, this task force was created to help our community and look at it not just from a city perspective, but a regional and county-wide perspective. In their efforts, they've been able to be in contact with another air carrier that could supplement the current air service that we receive. In discussions with that potential air carrier that would supplement our current services, um, there's a probability they would be able to provide service with larger jets, uh, a capacity of about fifty-seat jets, um, and provide daily flights related to that, most likely associated with Denver, but those details really haven't been hashed out yet. These are initial conversations that, uh, Missy White and her organization have, have been able to explore and, um, provide information to the city on. Now, a couple variables are affected, or excuse me, not affected, but apply would be a better word, if this supplemental air service provider comes to the city of Riverton and to our airport. Uh, the first of which, and I know there's been, uh, several conversations about this is, um, there's a potential minimum revenue guarantee associated with a new air carrier. These minimum revenue guarantees are not uncommon in the industry. In fact, it's almost a standard now. Over the last few years, um, most airports have, have been tied to them as they've looked to improve their air service. Um, we, we don't have a definite figure at this time. Again, these are just preliminary negotiations, it's preliminary investigation, but it's potential that the requirement would be around two point one million dollars. As you're aware, the minimum revenue guarantee, the guarantee to the air carrier that they will receive these amount of, this certain amount of revenue from their air service. The guarantee is basically, uh, a promise from the airport and the community that if they, for some reason, fall below that benchmark of revenue, that we would help them attain that minimum revenue. So the way it's calculated from year to year is a difference between what that benchmark is and what the actual revenue had, was, that was produced, excuse me. Um, again, this is very preliminary and I think it would be difficult to really project the amount of contributions required from whom and from where. We can definitely field questions a, about that later. Uh, the second variable would be that we'd, we'd need to improve our infrastructure currently at the airport. The first of which is the runway. We've already talked about that. That fortunately has been planned for a number of years and it's going to be taking an effect after calendar year twenty fifteen. That runway improvement will facilitate larger jets flying into our runway. Now, if we're going to have larger jets coming in, more passenger traffic, unfortunately we have to also improve our terminal and maybe that's not an unfortunately, it's just a fact. Currently, our secure area can house approximately thirty people. We have to increase that to fifty. Again, that falls in line with the regulations from TSA, from Homeland Security, et cetera. To do so, we'd have to, um, improve our terminal. However, staff feels that there's a way to even temporarily accommodate that without making it a large capital investment into that building. And that would be by moving a couple walls around. Paul has done a lot of work, just going through the logistics of this. Right now, there's an observation room right adjacent to the current, uh, secure area. If we moved a couple walls and used that observation area and incorporated it into a future secure area, that would provide us enough space to facilitate those fifty-seat jets coming in and out of our airport. So, infrastructure improvement, that's something we'd have to consider as well. The last of which is just coordinating schedules. Um, we've got to get our runway completed. We've got to, um, make the adjustments to the terminal and then work with whatever schedule, um, this potential air service provider has, um, whether or not they want to come during this or that quarter. Uh, we know that there are certain times that are at boom for aviation. Um, for example, this time of year is usually a dry spell until about, um, spring break time and then it, those schedules would need to be coordinated. Not a big deal, we can do that, we can work through it. Um, but those are some of the things associated with, I think, the work that Missy and her group have been performing. Now, to get back to the purpose of why we're, I guess, going through this lengthy, um, review of our, our airport and update of our airport is to, to garner support or see if there is support from the city and potentially the county and also the city of Lander, um, to draft resolutions and adopt them, specifically stating we support, um, the creation of a five oh, five oh one C six, tax-exempt organization that can then independently operate and, uh, negotiate with potential air service carriers and also explore ways to supplement or improve air service. I think I'm about done. That was a, a mouthful. I appreciate the time. I hope that that brought us up to speed and it allows us now to have a knowledgeable discussion and also facilitate anything that you need as far as questions go. Um, and before maybe opening it up to questions, uh, Missy, are you there?
I sure am.
Is there anything you would like to add to, uh, the summary or anything you'd like to provide information-wise to the council at this time?
Very little, Kyle. But you did a great job there. One thing that I do want to make sure folks know is that statistics from Wyoming Aeronautics indicate that we, we being Fremont County, have twenty-six thousand seat, or tickets purchased by Fremont County residents, uh, but only about thirteen thousand originate from Riverton Airport. So I know one of the questions is, is there existing, uh, need for additional air service? And already we have twenty-six thousand tickets originating in Fremont County. So there's substantial, uh, flying public out there.
Thank you, Missy.
Missy, uh, this is Steven. Is there anything you want to talk about related to the five oh one C six? Um, what you're looking for in, in support with that?
Yeah, there, there are a few things for that, again, minor clarifications. So part of that is recognizing that what we've learned from other communities in the state, um, particularly Cody and Jackson, who have extensive, uh, minimum revenue guarantees with different airlines to service their communities, is that the airlines very much prefer to be functioning, uh, in, in those negotiations with either a five oh one C six or a five oh one C three and not a municipal government. The reason for that being is anything done with a government entity, of course, has to be open book, which means if they have to be utterly public and transparent with price negotiations, we will get the absolute worst side of that bargain. They'll, in other words, they'll be charging us far more money than if we could negotiate, uh, in more private function. So that's, that's one reason why. The other part of that in terms of asking for the, the county and the two larger municipalities, at the very least to, to create a memorandum of, of understanding and support of the five oh one C six, if not all of the municipalities, is acknowledging that there is this, um, awkwardness really of knowing that each of the communities has its own GA airport and Kyle, uh, gave us a great example of all the, the many services and entities that use the Riverton Airfield outside of commercial air service. And, and yet air service itself, commercial air service is a community-wide issue and county-wide issue. So that was a way to say, the airlines are a standalone entity, but that entity is servicing all the municipalities of Fremont County. So that seemed the best way to be able to say, we're all on the same page with why this needs to happen and respecting that there is a, a bit of a tension in that you have a, you, I'm having a hard time speaking, municipally-owned airfield and then commercial service being, uh, something that serves the entire county. So we hope that, uh, the five oh one C six can bridge that gap.
Uh, this is Lars and I have a question. Do we have any kind of a feel for what, uh, for the number of employments necessary to satisfy the, uh, minimum revenue expectations for the, for an air service?
Boy, I wish it were that simple, that, uh, simple, uh, number of employments. Unfortunately, and this is part of the, the mystery of how airline tickets are priced. So if folks have looked at, say, a flight Denver to Phoenix, you might see that it's, um, three hundred dollars and then you decide, well, let's take a look at what the, the same Denver to Phoenix section is, but let's have it originate in Riverton and it's four hundred and fifty dollars more. But if you looked at a ticket that's only Riverton to Denver, it might be three hundred dollars. So how that, uh, apportionment goes between segments is one of the proprietary pieces of information that the airlines, uh, aren't likely to share with us. Not, not directly in part of it because it, it changes with every single ticket that's being purchased. Likewise, we could purchase the same itinerary, same flight segment, but if you were to purchase it on tomorrow and I purchased it in three weeks, I might be paying three hundred dollars more because of how seat values change as, uh, the number of seats are sold on a plane.
Thank you. Well, what, so maybe you've got, do you have experience with other airports and their minimum revenue guarantee? Have, um, have airlines dipped into that? Uh, or is that largely just, uh, a guarantee, a bunch of cash in a pot that never gets used?
It's somewhere in between there. One of the things we'll be able to do as a, that standalone entity is be getting, uh, regular updates about where, where we are at in terms of achieving goals towards that minimum revenue guarantee. It, it's definitely a process that's created more in the airline's favor for their, they, they're definitely erring on the side of caution. And what we've seen through other, um, minimum revenue guarantee flight segments in other communities in the state is that initially there can be anywhere from some payout to very little payout to no payout. And then over time, the, the amount required to be held in that reserve minimum revenue guarantee decreases.
Um, I'll open this up for discussion. Pardon?
Sir, uh, ma'am, um, maybe you can answer this question, but, uh, on the slide, it showed that, uh, looked like our employments peaked about two thousand and eight and then had been steadily declining since then, even before those new regulations hit. Uh, do you have any ideas what was causing that decline, even though, without the new regulations being in place?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, much of that has had to do, unfortunately, that, um, reliability consistency with Great Lakes has been rather episodic and many, starting many years ago, uh, many of the business travelers were frustrated enough with the inconsistencies that they switched to using other airports, Casper, Rock Springs, Jackson, uh, several years ago, prior to this most recent, um, spate of challenges.
And if I can follow that up, uh, that peak, was that done using that, uh, that smaller Beechcraft aircraft?
That I couldn't tell you. That might be something that Paul Griffin could answer.
Go ahead, Paul.
I can't really think about the year, but I know they brought on from nineteen to thirty seats, which increased our boarding. Then at one point, I think it's just Great Lakes started, uh, having issues with the thirty-seaters. They don't make that airplane anymore, hard to come by with parts. So they started having a lot of more mechanical issues with them. And so they eventually, uh, leave, have they phased them? First, I think there's just a couple in, in Great Lakes inventory and other airlines that Great Lakes size. So they went back to the nineteen seat. They can still get parts. It's, a lot of them are compatible with the nineteen hundred and the King Air.
Yeah, I guess my thing revolves around going from that small aircraft back all of a sudden, jumping to a fifty-seat aircraft and thinking that we're magically going to have the need for a fifty-seat aircraft when we, we've lived without a fifty-seat aircraft, uh, for all those years.
Yeah, like Missy, uh, pointed to that twenty-six thousand tickets have already been sold, it's county, but they're not going out. So the need is there. And the other, other thing is everything is going to a fifty-seat jet. They no longer, the parts issue with these smaller aircraft. The companies aren't making smaller aircraft anymore. So the standard is fifty-seat. They're actually about halfway through their cycle. The next one coming up is seventy-seat jets.
I, I think your question, I'm not sure who the, the gentleman was who asked about, uh, the need. I think your question's a good one. I can't give you an empirical response to that, but certainly anecdotally, being more involved with the broader community in terms of air service, I wish I had a nickel for every time someone stopped me in the grocery store or, you know, out someplace and said, "Just let me know when more reliable air service comes" and I'm back there. There's a surprisingly strong segment of the population that works elsewhere and commutes regularly, even weekly and bimonthly and does so out of alternate airports.
I, I understand that, ma'am, but reliability isn't, uh, based on a I understand that, ma'am, but reliability isn't based on how big an aircraft or whether it's 50-seat, 30-seat, 20-seat. So I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, we're, if we move to the bigger aircraft, all of a sudden, we're talking about having to improve the terminal, and it's kind of one of those, you know, betting on the come, that if, you know, you put this money into, you've improved the runway to handle a bigger aircraft, you improve a terminal to handle more people. But once again, if all of a sudden, you're back to, you know, 14, 15, 20,000 employments that were handled by a smaller aircraft, we've made those improvements for, basically for no reason. I guess those are the kind of things, issues I'm looking at, is that, you know, we're still looking, no matter what, we still wind up putting $300,000 a year into that airport to make it functional. Now you're talking about making, spending more money to, quote, "improve the terminals." You're spending money to, quote, "improve the runway," hoping that at the end of that tunnel, people will start flying out of Riverton. But again, you've already said you can't guarantee ticket prices, so if it still is $400, $500 more expensive for me to fly out of Riverton, then, once again, maybe I'm jumping in the car to drive to Casper.
Right. Quick clarification. We can't guarantee what the percentage of a whole ticket goes to Riverton. That's proprietary information we don't have access to. One of the functions of a task force or a 501(c)(6), though, is actually to monitor the prices and to be able to have ongoing negotiations with the airline providing it. And we're very aware that there's a distinct price sensitivity to that. Many folks say somewhere in the neighborhood of $250 is the price point at which they'll get in a car. So we're aware of that and would be in ongoing negotiations with the airline to keep that flight segment at a reasonable price. The other clarification is that the runway improvements were in schedule long before any conversation about an additional air carrier came to the table. Those are being done in order to keep the runway in compliance with FAA regulations on a federal level, which affects long-term funding options for the airport. So it's not done solely for seeking out an additional air carrier.
Your Honor.
Excuse me, just, Paul, let me ask you one question that might help clarify the number of seats coming in and out of Riverton. How many, you know, when we had those peak boardings, how many planes were actually coming into Riverton in a day?
We had, I believe, four flights a day.
Four flights a day, and a couple of those were 30-passenger planes, right?
At one time, they were all 30-passenger.
And one time, they were all 30-passenger planes.
Now...
And now, we get two nine-passenger planes because...
Some of them are still 18-seats, but depends on, I think they look at the load, but there are nine-seats coming in and out here also. And you'll never make your 10,000 employment.
And that's limited by the number of pilots available, right?
Correct. By a nine-seater, they can still fly a pilot with 250-plus hours, trying to get that 1500. Great Lakes has put them in there, trying to, basically, train their own pilots to fill that. Then the bad part, like Kyle talked about, then go up through the major league, start training again.
So we're really looking at making a trade between 10 50-seat jets a day versus four 30-seat planes?
Right. Your Honor, and I guess the question could be to Missy or Paul, but as I understand what you're saying, the 50-seat and smaller, or smaller than 50-seat airplanes are basically becoming obsolete, and you're saying there's really no more commercial planes being made under 50-seats. So, long-term, we're sort of in the boat where we got to accommodate 50-seat jets to be able to still be in commercial air service.
Yes, correct. And it's not just Riverton, again, it's nationwide. It's an issue not only at Great Lakes level, but the next higher levels up to majors.
Which, again, then also reduces the amount of pilots you have, because you're putting more people on one plane with two pilots than you can put with, um, two pilots have got to run a 19-seat jet or plane, and two pilots run a 50-seat plane. So it ends up being less pilots per person, I guess, if you want to get down to that.
Jonathan?
So, Missy, if the city is in support of this 501(c)(6), what process, I guess, would that entity undertake? And at what point, I mean, I guess, I guess what I wouldn't want to see is that we say, "Yeah, you guys go ahead, you make a negotiation with the airline, and then the city just has to live with whatever you negotiate." I guess I need to know where the check and balance is, since we are the ones ultimately on the line with the money, because it is our airport, to make sure that we have wide enough buy-in to go forward.
Missy, are you there?
I just asked a great question.
Well, Your Honor, I would take a stab in the sense of the, this standalone agency is standalone. It wouldn't be backed by the city of Riverton. I mean, the 501(c)(6) would be a standalone entity, whatever they negotiate. This resolution that we want to pass does not bind or commit us to spending a certain amount of money at this point. That would have to come later. I mean, that's the point of this resolution, is mainly to say, are you in support of moving forward with this? If you're not, then we don't need to keep moving forward with it. But if we need to move forward with the resolution, because they want to make sure the big entities, Lander, Riverton, and the county are all on board with this, to move forward, but you're not committing to money because everyone's going to have, I think Riverton's going to have a different say, because we feel like we're committing a lot of money to the operation part of that. And maybe we should have a discount on the revenue guarantee, different than maybe some of the other cities, but it may not be that way.
Your Honor, so would I be accurate, then, to say that, in a way, the 501(c)(6) would be negotiating also with these various governmental agencies to say, how much, how much are you going to put toward this? And maybe looking at businesses and whomever else they can draw funding from before they enter into this deal? But it's their deal, not the city of Riverton's. If, you know, if there's not, I mean, the money has to be in the account before the deal goes through, right?
That's right, Your Honor. I mean, that's, that's good synopsis, I don't need to restate that. That's exactly correct.
Thank you.
Your Honor, the 501(c)(3) or (c)(6) would be looking to the city of Riverton and Lander and the county to back them in some grant applications or whatever they need to do to come up with funding or, and provide funds probably out of our general funds, to come up with this base sum of money that they're going to use to back the revenue guarantee?
You're good.
Hello?
Yeah, Your Honor, if that number is 2.1, and the state's going to come up with either 1.2 or 1.5, then we're going to have to, between the cities and the county and private individuals will have to come up with the rest of that to get up to the 2.1 before the airlines will say they're coming.
So can you hear us, Missy?
No.
It must be going just one way for some reason.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
There is 20, or 29,000 tickets sold out of Fremont County.
Twenty.
One time, I flew out of Denver to Casper, the entire plane load was to Riverton. So you can say about the 12 or the whatever, but we need an airport, and if we had a sound airport, 1985, when I came here, we had one. I flew all over the world out of Riverton. And that's where we need to be going.
And, Your Honor, I would agree. I fly 15 to 20 times a year.
All right, I'll say hello, say hello back.
In the last year...
Hello, can you hear us?
Very little of that has been able to be through Riverton. Most of my Riverton flights have been canceled, and I've gotten forced to go to Casper, for example.
No, not getting anything.
And when I'm in Casper, I find the same thing. I very rarely see less than a half a dozen people that are standing there from Riverton, you know, that could be boarding in Riverton.
Can you hear us now?
It's just for one flight, so...
Oh, I just heard something.
You know, so I think, again, I think, long-term, we've got to accommodate the 50-seat jets because that's all there's going to be.
Still good?
If we don't, we're going to be out of the commercial aviation business. And I think with the 25-plus thousand boardings or out, or tickets coming out of Fremont County, we obviously have room for growth, and we're never going to get all of those. But if we go from 14,000 to 20, and leave the other 26 or 7,000, or the other 7,000 going somewhere else, we've still gained huge. And I think with our fees that we charge and stuff, and that would probably be more than adequate to suffice for some airline to be satisfied in coming into Riverton. And then if you threw, being able to go to Salt Lake, that would add another chunk, because I think a lot of people, if they have connections that are cheaper through Salt Lake, they end up going to Jackson at Salt Lake. You let me know if you want to talk, right? Okay, Jonathan, you had something more?
Yeah, the only other thing that I wanted to say is, I think something that currently hurts our boardings is the fact that, it's my understanding that Great Lakes isn't participating with other airlines in miles and things like that. And, you know, for a business traveler who's on a plane twice a week, that matters to them. They want to know that they're getting the credit for those miles. And I've had several of them say that, you know, when Great, when Great Lakes lost that ability for their flights to count toward miles, then that also pushed people away. So I think, you know, I think it's a more systemic problem than simply, you know, yes, obviously reliability is huge, but there's other little pieces of the puzzle that further contribute to the problem. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, you know, if, if in fact, you know, what we're saying is, yeah, go try to negotiate with all these people and see if there's a workable solution to get air service here that is reliable and that might bring our employments up, I would be in support of that type of a committee at the end of the day. So, thank you.
Your Honor, I just have one question on this air service task force. How many members will there be in it? And how many, the second part of that question is, how many from Riverton, Lander, and Fremont County?
Your Honor, I believe we've had one from Riverton express interest in that. She's trying to organize that right now, of trying to get an equal amount. She wants to keep it fairly small. She didn't, initially, our task force that we started back in the spring, we had one from every community and some outlaw, I mean, it was a huge committee. And it got a little ruly in the sense that it was hard to get everyone on board to meet. So I think the sense is to have at least one from every, every one of those communities, so it'd be like four or five committee.
Martin, do you have more? So, do we have some kind of consensus? We want to move forward with a resolution to create a 401(c)(6) and move to spend some city energy on getting Lander and the county to join that? If that, if we can't create that, then we don't have anything. So that's, that would be the first step? Okay, so let's see what happens. Let's see what happens with the actual creation of that, of that task force committee and getting that legal, so that we've got a vehicle to hold money? Because if we don't have that, then we can't get money from the state aeronautics, is that correct? Okay, so we'll have to have that kind of a committee in place, doing something functional. So let's move in that direction. And then the second thing we can do is, we could start the drafting process on an MOU that would bind the members of that committee in some way, so that we would, we would, we would all understand what our responsibilities and roles are.
Yes, Your Honor, and I've already drafted somewhat of a resolution that we'll plan to bring to the next meeting.
Your Honor, one other question came to mind. Is there cost associated with creating this 501(c)(6), or is it? No? Okay.
Your Honor, no, not on the city.
Thank you.
I think we, I think we are happy moving forward on that, okay? Is there anything else that we need to talk about? I don't think so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.